I call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the North Adams City Council for February fourteenth, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Yes.
Barbo.
Yes.
Bona.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasaham.
Here.
Alesskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade. Wilkinson.
Here.
Please rise for a moment of silent remembrances. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the rules of order, I know that they were in general government and the general government committee will bring them back at the next meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-fourth, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Sapienza. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was both saying as well, I was not here.
Okay. We've also determined that you don't have to do that according to Robert's rules, but I know that some of the clerks have told people they should. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on our agenda. So if anyone would like to speak, please approach the mic, give your name and address for the record. No personal attacks.
I don't know what the number is, but there's a proposal to get some money for two new police cruisers. And I would like to suggest that that's a very good idea and it comes from the parking meter firm. And Mayor, if you hired a full-time parking meter mate or somebody, you could probably buy three cars with the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will move on. Council Paper 11,790, An Ordnance to Amend Section 10, entitled Special Regulations of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams by inserting in numerical order therein the following section, 10-13. A motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law would be in order.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Wilkinson, would you like to give us an update?
Yes, that's a little misleading in that we're actually proposing, oh, I will propose tonight, that what we just mentioned will be split into two sections. This has been recommended by the city solicitor. I just want to bring everybody up to date where we're at. Last time we were here, we passed a short-term rental ordinance to a second reading and we were supposed to publish by law. President Blackmer suggested that we send it to the solicitor. Everybody here agreed that that was a good idea and that's what we did. Then it went back to, that we're supposed to go back to general government. I want to thank Mayor Maxi, as well as Kathy E., the administrative officer, for putting this together so fast. We're going to have general government the following Wednesday and of course, everybody would like to put this all behind us, but with a proper ordinance. Billy Inspector, Mr. Moranty's being keeping track. When we meet on this tonight, it'll be number 24 on short-term rentals, so it's been around the block. I would like to read, and because everybody was concerned about what the solicitor said, this is an email that went to Kathy E., again, the administrative officer, and then her reaction to me. I have given you a copy of that in the packet I gave you out tonight. It says, "Hi, Wayne. I hope this will be self-explanatory according to Joel's email." And Joel is a city solicitor. "I moved the sections that he recommended go into general ordinance to the building department section. According to Joel, the zoning portion has been through a second reading and is good to go, but would probably want to wait until the new change to the general ordinance is finalized, so they can be implemented together. If you have any questions, please call me." She mentions when she's available. This was basically done because the city solicitor had noticed that there was one little flaw in doing it all at once, and that was somebody that has been doing short-term rentals for the last five years, and I'm sure there are still people out there. Couldn't say that they were grandfathered. We put in this ordinance, but they were grandfathered, so they don't have to comply with the law. This takes that out. Putting one section with the building code does not allow them to get grandfathering. He just thought it was a good way to go. Everybody else also agreed. Kathy E. was the one that split the things up into two sections. No words were changed. We've all passed this already before. No words were changed. We're just putting it in a little differently into the zoning bylaws. So with that said, I would like to make a motion on the first part.
We've already done that. It's two separate things.
We already done it. It's two separate things.
And we just made the motion to publish. So I want to clarify, it was never published.
It was never published.
So by taking it out, technically, it's two separate ordinances again, so I, this ordinance is the first part, the one that you, that was the original one, and the motion has been made to pass to a second reading and publish.
Yes.
And that's, and it's been seconded, so you were the beginning of the discussion.
Very good.
Okay.
I'm a little bit confused, but I will go with you on that. So we're...
And then we'll move on to the next part of it.
Okay.
It's a separate, it's actually on the agenda as two separate items. They've been fixed.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else have anything to comment on STRs, on this part of the ordinance? Counselor Harpen.
Because Counselor Wilkinson said he's confused, I just want to make sure that I understand as well, because I think there is some confusion. I'm sure there's going to be some confusion in the public as well. So the first section, which is section number 2A, which is called Building Code Ordinance Section, is the section that we're voting on now. It's already been published to a first reading. Is that correct?
No, it was not published. That's what I clarified.
Okay.
We voted to publish. It didn't get published. And then once we sent it to the, we were sending it to the solicitor at the holidays, so we weren't going to get it back in time to vote on it again, so we wanted to wait until we actually, there's no point in publishing it if the solicitor is going to make substantial changes, because we'd have to republish it, so we didn't publish it.
Okay.
We voted to publish it.
So this is, we'll have to come back again for a second reading?
Yep. That's what the motion was.
Okay. So I understand. And then the second section, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, and all that technically did was pull part of the original ordinance out of zoning and move it into building code for a couple of reasons. Also, if there were tweaks, we had conversations about living a certain way, or having this, or having that. By moving it into there, we can just make changes by voting to change the ordinance at the city council level. It's not a zoning ordinance, so we deal with the fact that we don't want to have people claiming that they have retroactive, that they're grandfathered, so we wanted to make sure we covered that aspect, and the fact that some of the tweaks that we may or may not make in the future, based on how it works, will much, be much easier to do by being in the building code and not in the zoning, because any zoning changes that are made have to go through a public hearing with the planning board and all kinds of other conversations, and then they have to have another meeting, and then they have to vote and send it to us, and it's kind of more complicated. So the things that were taken out and moved to just the building code make it much more manageable for the staff, and I think it gets rid of, I think getting rid of the grandfathering is, it was the huge piece.
Okay. So let me just make sure I understand.
Mm-hmm.
So section number 2A is, it does not get affected by the zoning and doesn't have to go back to zoning for any changes, correct? Section 2B would have to go to zoning if there were changes to it.
Oh, it's all in here. I'm sorry. Was it in the packet?
Yes.
The short answer is yes.
Yeah, oh, two, oh, I see.
Yeah, I'm just reading the cover sheet.
You're reading the cover sheet. I didn't actually read the cover sheet. I read the stuff.
Okay.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
The verbiage is all the same. It's just been spelt.
Okay, okay.
So yes.
Okay, so if something in section 2B affects section 2A, or we make a section in 2A that affects section 2B, then what happens?
Okay, two, I just have to, I need to use your mental building code ordinance section.
Because the definitions are in section 2B. So if you change something in 2A, I'm specifically thinking about the local agent in charge. Anything to do with that is my concern, but the definition of the local agent in charge is in section 2B.
The definition, primary, okay. Short-term, 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 adjustment, primary resident dwelling, professionally managed agent in charge. Oh, I guess then we'd have to go back to the planning board.
Correct.
That's, I mean, I personally think that's a bad, it's too bad it's that way, but that's the way we split it up.
So the, anything to do with, anything that's defined in section B, it would have to go back to the planning board.
Looks like it. Counselor, I'm sorry, Mayor, you have something to add?
Complicate matters, but...
Complicating things.
No, 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 no complicating. But on our agenda, it references section 10 of the special regulations, but then in the proposed change, it also references section 3. So my question is, and this is just a housekeeping thing, can you really act on 2A tonight because it's not on the agenda?
It's in the next one.
Maybe I don't...
Isn't it the second item?
Yes.
It's the second item.
Oh, maybe I don't have an updated agenda. I printed mine too soon.
Counselor 11, Council Paper 11,790, An Ordnance to Amend Section 3, entitled Building Code, by inserting after?
Yeah, there must have been a revision that I had. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Few revisions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was.
I printed mine on Friday. I was early.
So yes, you are correct. That'll be the case.
We don't have it.
So the biggest difference is the grandfathering, which I think is really important. Counselor Bona.
I think other than, like I say, splitting it and where some of it won't have to go through planning board and zoning, the majority of what was discussed of how it is going to affect the owners of the shared housing is how we left it at the last meeting, you know, other than a couple of the open questions which were, have been answered. But, so again, other than just splitting it, which is really more affecting zoning and planning board, it isn't, it isn't changing anything with the shared housing owners, even though we're voting on two sections, but at the end, it's what we discussed in the past couple of meetings.
Yeah, it just separated it out into different sections of the, of our ordinances. Anyone else? Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, would it be possible, I don't want to add any more confusion to this, but would it be possible to put the definitions in, under section 3 in the building code?
I think Counselor Wilkinson's going to walk out the door.
I don't want to complicate. If it's going to complicate things, then...
All I can tell you is this is a recommendation after 25 meetings, and the city solicitor looked at the final rendering of this, said this is about as perfect as it gets, but it needs to be split up in order that you don't have to go back, every time you wanted to do it, something with building code part, you don't have to go back to joint meeting of the planning board, yada, yada, yada. He just had this more concise, more... He mentioned to Kathy E., this is, could be something that other towns are going, and cities are going to copy because he thought it was that right on, beats the building code. Mr. Moranty's happy. He's everybody's expectations after 24 meetings.
Great, yeah. I would have no issue in voting for this at all as it stands now, so. It was just a...
Oh, understood. Questions are good.
Hypothetical question. Thank you.
And this doesn't go, I mean, that's just, as Counselor Bona, I think, proposed it back in 2017, but before that, in 2013, 2014, we started, we had ad hoc committees. We've been talking about this issue for, well, if you say 2013, that's almost, that's 10 years.
All I know is Mr. Moranty's keeping track, and this is number 24.
That was 27, but okay.
She refuses to come to any more.
Yeah, so no, thank you, thank you, you and the committee that worked with the administration, and also your committee, Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Shade.
I will have the same thank yous after the second reading.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Counselor Wilkinson's given an explanation. Counselor Bona.
Again, I just also want to say, this is, this will get this moving forward. It actually still won't take effect, because another thing that we'll have to come to is, for example, are the fees. So until the offices that are going to be doing the inspections and everything, they still have to determine paperwork and fees, which will then actually come back to us. So until those are approved, this actually won't be moving forward.
When we started all this, we know it was a working document.
Right, right.
And it's a place to start. We know there'll be revisions once we implement it, because we thought we were doing everything perfectly, but maybe we need to tweak this.
We need to get it moving. This is a start, and like I say, there's still parts of this before it actually fully takes place.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One nay.
Two.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't hear either. So six to two, that makes eight. No, roll call is when we actually pass it. To pass to a second reading does not require a roll call vote. So six to two. Council Paper 11,790-2, An Ordnance to Amend Section 3, entitled Building Code, by inserting after section 3-49.7, the following section, 3-50, 1 through 3-50.3. The motion would be to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So move.
Second.
I think it's the same update. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A nay from Counselor Harpen and Counselor Barbo. Six to two. Council Paper 12,029, Mayor's Communication Number 20, recommending the reappointment of Lynette Arabond to the planning boards for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,230, Mayor's Communication Number 21, recommending the appointment of Paul DeLagel Jr. to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Alesskowitz.
He was there before.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,231, Mayor's Communication Number 22, recommending the appointment of Peter Milanese to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alesskowitz, Sapienza. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,232, Mayor's Communication Number 3, requesting the transfer of $109,582.13 from the city's parking meter reserve account to support the purchase of two police cruisers. Mayor?
Thank you, President Blackmer. So these cruisers were ordered close to two years ago. They are 2020s, coming to us in 2023. They are going to replace a vehicle, two vehicles that have over 100,000 miles on them. I believe one car is a 2013 and one car is a 2017. So the 13 has seen its time, and the 17, even though it's a little newer, has also seen its time. So these are two 2020 cruisers. We currently have a balance of roughly $206,000 in the parking meter reserve. Once we take out the $109,000, we'll have a balance of roughly $96,000 and some change. So that is a little alarming, but these were ordered way back when, and there was not money appropriated at that time, and the bill is due, and they're due to arrive very soon, so therefore, we're asking for the request from the parking meter reserve.
I have a question. I know that previously, somebody in the police department did a whole schedule.
Yep.
Not everybody can see me. Like a whole schedule, an Excel spreadsheet, I'm sure, of purchases and where the funding course would come over, like a 10-year plan. Is this part of that?
This was part of the original plan.
Just wanted to make sure that we were like, kind of stuck into what we said we were going to do.
Yes. And I think initially, we have seen purchases, appropriations rather, in the budget, and a few years ago, that was taken out, so that is something that we'll have moving forward as we talk about future purchases. But we're trying to replace things, you know, one or two at a time, rather than come in and say, "We need five cruisers and we need them now." The reality is that there's a two to three-year build-out for these types of cars. We're just feeling the pain of that, and also as far as police and public services as well. It's not like you can drive down and pick out a car like you used to anymore.
And part of that's the COVID and the supply, I mean, you can't, you can't get a new pickup truck.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Counselor Harpen.
Through the chair to the mayor. So I just want to ask, do we have a forecast for 2023, what we would expect to put in, back into the reserve account for parking?
Into this reserve account?
Yeah.
Yes, we are, well, yes and no. Yes, in the sense that that is something that we're working on as part of our local receipts, but we also are working with the police department to be more diligent in parking patrol.
And I know we're also doing parking at Mass MoCA, too, right?
Yep.
So that money's going back into the reserve account as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson.
I remember, and I don't know if it pertains to these two vehicles, but when Counselor Lamb was present, he was talking about, and I believe the mayor at the time, we're going to get energy-efficient police, are they going to be electric, are there going to be hybrids? Are these that way?
So a couple of our cruisers are hybrids. In one of our green communities grant, there was a line written for an electric police cruiser, and to be honest, the force does not want a all-electric cruiser. I don't know off the top of my head if these are hybrids, but we currently have hybrids in our fleet now. Let me just see if it's...
It's going to be an ongoing policy to try to do something about that in the future.
I can, I'll follow up with a question about the hybrid, but it doesn't say on this bill that I have. They just send me the bill with the money.
Thank you.
But I'll get that detail for you, counselor.
Counselor Bona.
Yeah, the, are we going to be auctioning off or getting rid of these other vehicles? Are we keeping them for something? Well, the no, I don't know. That was two questions with one no. Sorry, through the chair, but the, is a 2017 with 100,000 miles, doesn't, I mean, seems like it should still have some life to it.
Right. We, we are working on examining all of our fleet across all of our departments. We even have cars hidden, for example, in the armory, that we just need to get rid of. There's no sense of holding junk. If we're not going to have them in active patrols and we're not using them, we shouldn't have them. We don't have the room to have a fleet, have more cars than we do officers. So our plan is anything that we need to declare surplus, we will and move along.
Okay, well, again, I just didn't know if there's other departments, for example, that can use these...
Right. A lot of these cars are having some transmission problems because they run so much and they run hard. Some of them are having constant brake issues, but again, that's how they're driven, but we'll have to evaluate that, but we're not, we're not keeping junk anymore.
Counselor Alesskowitz, then Counselor Sapienza.
Was it an oversight on someone's part two years ago when this first came up with a clean energy grant, because we were told that, out of that grant, that one of the cruisers was going to be covered out of that?
Yeah, I don't know that it, if it was an oversight, Counselor, I can't speak to that, but in the Green Communities Act that I just actually looked up, because I anticipated your question, there was, it was $5,000 that was allocated. The patrol, the chief, they don't want an electric car. So whether something was going on here at City Hall and they were building that grant and they weren't consulting with the department, I can't speak to that. But what we did with the weatherization is we increased that $5,000 to do more weatherization in this building, the skating rink, and there was one other building. There were three buildings, so we just spread that $5,000 over. And that weatherization, it was weatherization and it was also to replace a lot of these lights as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if I fully answered your question.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, through the chair, to the mayor. I understand that there was a, there was like a spreadsheet that we mentioned earlier, an Excel spreadsheet, was being done by an officer who is no longer employed by the North Adams Police Department. Did that get carried on by another officer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Officer Boudreau is in charge of our fleet management.
Okay, good.
That's what the word is. Okay, anyone else? Then let's move on to the order. Council Paper 12,232, An Order Transferring $109,582.13 From The City's Parking Meter Reserve Account To Support The Purchase Of Two Police Cruisers. A Motion To Adopt Would Be In Order.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Obasaham. Any more discussion? This is a roll call that...
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasaham?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Thank you. Council Paper 12,233, Mayor's Communication Number 24, Requesting The Presence Of Counselors At A Joint Meeting Of The City Council And School Committee To Elect A New Member Of The North Adams Public School Committee. Mayor, without objection, I'll file the communication.
This is just a reminder of that meeting. I believe I polled all of you last month and let you know about the timing of this. So basically, this is to fill the open vacancy that we have on the school committee. On or about Tuesday, the 21st, we will send a packet to all of you with all of the resumes or letters of interest from our candidates, and then we will convene at 6:00 PM on the 28th and have a joint convention. The plan is we'll talk a little bit about the process, and then we'll have each candidate make a brief presentation and allow the counselors and the school committee members to ask questions, and then we will make a motion or a vote to elect or appoint a new school committee member. And my hope is, if everything goes as we plan, that possibly the city clerk could swear that individual in that night, and my hope is we also get a brief break before we start back at 7:30.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Alesskowitz, then Counselor Harpen. I'm sorry, Counselor Wilkinson.
Now that I'm on the other side...
It's the syllables.
We actually are related, but that's beside the point. Just a question. Who actually votes? Does the school committee and the council vote, or is it just the council that votes?
Both.
They both. So everybody has a vote.
Yes. And we will also have a Zoom link for those of you who cannot be here at 6:00, so we'll be able to zoom in and try to keep that as orderly.
6:00 is a good time.
Thank you. I agree with you, Counselor.
Counselor Aless, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Harpen and then Counselor Alesskowitz.
Okay, through the chair to the mayor. So Mayor, if I knew someone that was interested and they wanted to apply, is there a specific deadline and who would they apply to? Is there an email address?
Yep, the deadline is on Monday, February 20th at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
And they would email btassone@napsk12.org, and we also have it posted on our website and on the schools' website, as well as our Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, Burschers, did an article, and, but isn't that a holiday?
It is, but we're still...
Okay.
We're still functioning.
While I'm working, but, Counselor Alesskowitz.
Through the chair to the mayor. Has there been much interest expressed? I've seen that. We, I believe, I have received one email.
Yep, yep. We've only had one letter of interest thus far.
Thank you.
Now we'll make voting easy.
You say that now, but when 10 appear, we'll be checking your watch. You say that now, but when ten appear, we'll be checking your watch.
Okay. So, thank you. Move on. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
It's not anything we vote on. It's just a
Yep.
File the communication. Okay. Council Paper twelve thousand two thirty-four, Mayor's Communication Number Twenty-five, Presenting a Proclamation in Support of Black History Awareness Month. Without objection, I will file that. Communication and mayor?
I need to get my glasses organized. I don't even think those are mine. So, thank you, Councilor Blackmer. February twenty twenty-three, we'd like to proclaim Black History Awareness Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by the black community and a time for recognizing a central role of African-Americans in our history. And whereas this observance affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable of black heritage and to honor so many of our black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our community, our state, and our nation. Whereas since the bicentennial of seventeen, nineteen seventy-six, Americans of all walks of life have come together during this month of February to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of African-Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Whereas Black History Month is a time for all citizens of the city of North Adams to remember their contribution and their legacy for those who helped us build our nation, fought against prejudice to secure lives of dignity and opportunity for all of our citizens. I therefore, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do proclaim February as Black History Awareness Month in the city of North Adams and encourage all residents to join me in celebrating their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Moving on, taxi applications. Application for license to drive a taxi received from Kelsey St. Pierre of OTT Taxi.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application for license to drive a taxi received from Courtney Seer, oh, to drive for OTT Taxi.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application for license to drive a taxi received from Stephen M. Cook for OTT Taxi.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Approach the microphone. You have two minutes. No personal attacks. Name an address for the record.
Robert Smith, here at one six three North Street in North Adams. I'm pretty still. I have something I want to read. I'm probably in quest for the city council who serves on this panel. Seven reasons why. Number one, this council tried twice to get elected but failed, but then was appointed. Two, this council was re-elected with a high amount of citizen votes. Three, this council attends all city functions and meet and greet all city constituents. Four, this council attends all council meetings as well as committee meetings. Five, this council puts its heart and soul to serve the people of North Adams. Six, this council is a rock-solid asset to this panel. Seven, this council is Brian Sapienza. Counselor, thank you for serving all the residents in North Adams.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
I'll break it in. Robert Carmino, one seventy-three Squidzy Street. Uh, there's several things I'd like to discuss with the mayor about out-of-state cars. There are at least nine up in my neighborhood that have registered out-of-state and been there for more than six months. And, uh, we're losing revenue because of it. Number two is dog licenses. That's been a problem for years and years and years. And, uh, I still notice there's a lot of dogs around this city with no dog tags on their collars. And the last thing I'd like to mention is, mayor, somebody from the Windsor Lake Commissioner who was ever in charge of that. The ice is not very thick. And with the weather warming up, there's potential for somebody to drown. If somebody's not warning them to stay off the lake. And I think that's, uh, and I am a fisherman. And, uh, I'm very aware of the ice conditions up there. And there's, believe me, there's, if there's six inches, there is a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Mayor's updates.
Okay. So, I'd like to just remind everyone that on Saturday, February eighteenth, we will have our Winter Fest starting at nine A.M. and running to four o'clock. We have a whole host of activities, including ice sculpturing, ice sculpturing, a kids' carnival, of course, the wonderful horses, a bonfire, some readings, and of course, our free skate at the skating rink from two to four P.M. So, please come down. We also have a craft fair and we're bringing back the Chowder Fest. So, please come down and join us. I also like to say thank you to whoever played Cupid today all over town with the big hearts that were posted. Somehow, I am taking the credit for that. I had nothing to do that, to do with that. But I'd love to thank whoever our Cupid is running around North Adams. We're trying to bring some cheer, so I do appreciate that. And I guess my detective skills aren't that good because I haven't figured out who it is as of yet. But I will. So, thank you to Cupid, whoever was out there today. And the other thing I just wanted to discuss with the council, we are still navigating the life expectancy of our elevator. As most of you know, we had a fire a few weeks in it and it has been out of service. We've had the insurance company out. We've had a vendor out to evaluate it. And there still is a question whether it can be repaired or not. So, with that being said, all meetings are limited to the first floor because there's not access to the second floor. So, when you're booking your meetings, if you would just remember that, we are short on some space. So, for the moment, we are going to set up some tables in the lobby if both these rooms are, are already accounted for. But hopefully, this will be just a short-term thing. I'm hoping. I'm praying. But if need be, we'll open up some of our city buildings to have your meeting. So, if I just ask you if you could be patient with us for a few more weeks, hopefully, we'll have a game plan as to what our next steps are going to be. The issue with the elevator is the company that manufactured it is no longer in business. It's about fifty years old. It will actually be fifty years old on May twelfth. And we're just having, they're having a hard time sourcing the parts. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that they can find them. But then the next question is, we fix this aspect of it and what is the next aspect that may go down? So, that's something we need to really start planning for. But we were very fortunate that day. The team was great. We evacuated the building rather quickly. And everything was contained to the elevator shaft. So, those are my updates for tonight. And again, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Committee reports in minutes? Councilor Sapienza?
Yes. Just want to remind everybody, there's a public safety meeting at five-thirty tomorrow afternoon in the first-floor conference room, which is located right behind the council chambers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Liaison updates and councilor's concerns. I'm sorry.
We got to do something about that microphone. It's between you and me and you never see me when I have my hand up. So, come, yeah. Let's get rid of it. Anyway, I, through the chair to the mayor. Could you bring us an update on what, if anything, is going on with Heritage State Park? We haven't heard anything about, anything going on down there in a long time.
Well, we recently did a minor roof repair for the museum. We're going back and forth on some mold issues in Building Four. We're still talking about what's going to happen with Buildings One, Two, and Three with the Freight Yard Pub. Buildings, um, Four, the extension of Four, is still occupied by the gymnastics business. And they just had a great show a few weeks ago, so that was exciting for the park. Going around, Building Six is occupied by BMs. And we're still trying to find a plan for Buildings, um, Fi, Building Five, the ugly yellow building that connects down to the brown building. But, you know, things are slow and work in progress there.
Could we, could we paint it?
We have lead paint. So, part of that requires an abatement process, which we're hoping at some point we can secure some funds to. But we do have some things that we're discussing as to at least do the forward-facing parts of the building. There's a lot there and it's been neglected for a very long time. So, it's going to take us a little bit to whip that into shape.
Thank you.
We do, I just want to add, counselor, we do have some people regularly asking about our open space. But the problem is, is some of it is so far gone that it's too much for someone to build up. We are pursuing the whole commercial condo concept. But there's a lot of legwork there.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Harpen?
Through the chair to the mayor. Can we also get an update on the temporary location of the police station?
Sure, absolutely. Um, we are probably at ninety-five percent for construction and build-out as we speak. The furniture is arriving this week. As soon as we get a, a little bit further along and some things cleaned up, we will invite the council to take a tour. Our hope is to have all the communications and everything run by March first. But I will say that's a soft date. We're doing a little bit of a dance with Verizon right now. But we're hoping very soon that we could at least take all of you through a tour.
Okay. And that wouldn't include Dispatch is going to stay in the same building?
Dispatch is going to stay where it is for the moment. We are in the process of applying for a nine-one-one equipment grant, which not only includes equipment, but also the infrastructure improvements that we really need to be done, no matter where we are. So, it doesn't make sense to invest now. Our equipment will not survive a move. So, our thought is we will keep Dispatch right where it is for the moment. The grant, I believe, is due March first or April first with an award date sometime in July. And our hope is to have Dispatch moved by August. But when we get the new headquarters online, all business will go through the Holden Street location.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Liaison updates, councilor's concerns, those were follow-ups. Correspondence, we don't have any. A motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.